Good evening and welcome to tonight's Southbridge Town Council meeting. Here in Town Council chambers, it is November 23rd, 2015, about five minutes past seven. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Claire. Counselor Crossco.
I'm sorry, Counselor Claire is excused.
Counselor Crossco.
Present.
Counselor Clements.
Present.
Counselor Estrada.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Present.
Counselor Moriarty.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Counselor Vandal.
Present.
Counselor Vecchia.
Excused.
Seven here.
Agenda item number three is Consider and Accept Town Council Meeting Minutes of Monday, November 9th, 2015.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, clarifications? Seeing none, a simple hand vote is fine. All those in favor. Unanimous. Agenda item four is Subcommittee Reports, A, General Governments.
Yes, we did have a meeting, Mr. Chair, through you, on November 18th. Attendance were myself, Counselor Steve, Citizen Member Rick Nash, our Town Manager, Mr. Sanangelo, our Building Commissioner, Nick Tortis, and also our Council Chair, Sean Moriarty. We opened the meeting at 6:12 PM. Agenda item number one, Vote to Appropriate $7,485.36 from the sewer-certified retained earnings to account number 600.440.5740.0.573, uninsured sewer backup costs to reimburse a homeowner for costs related to a sewer backup occurring on December 27, 2013. Mr. Sanangelo described the situation in late 2013. The Sewer Department worked on a sewer line within Marshes Street. One resident, Mr. Sean Murphy, claimed that the pressure-increased cap caused his cap to burst, causing septic issues in his basement. Mr. Tortis said he found Mr. Murphy's cap did not meet the current plumbing colon beneath and believes it would have not burst if it had, but noted it might have deteriorated over time, and that's not unusual. Many older homes from 1950s and 60s have brass and cast iron caps, and the iron does rust. More recent constructions tends to use PVC pipe, which doesn't have this issue. Mr. Sanangelo said the town used to have insurance for this, but no longer does, and the town's carrier, MIAA, double I.A., excuse me, doesn't even offer it. Maya. Karen Heroners found the funds to pay for this incident from other budget items, so it won't cost any extra, and Mr. Murphy provided various documents of his expenses. Mr. Sanangelo said that regardless of the cap, the pressure did cause the problem, and believes the circumstance weren't paying Mr. Murphy's claim. "I see no value in fighting this one," he said, predicting the town would lose in court if it were to go that far. Mr. Tortis said that he knew of similar incident happening on Worcester Street, but did not know if the claim had been paid. "I bet if I went to 10 houses, I would find eight caps that were defective," he said. Mr. Sanangelo proposed sending warning notes to people that might be in this situation to get them to check and replace their caps. He suggested it could be included in the next year's tax bills. Rick Nash moved to recommend payment, and Counselor Steve seconded it. It passed 4-0. Counselor Moriarty moved to adjourn at 6:28 PM. Counselor Steve seconded it. Submitted by Gus Steves, Southbridge Town Council. That's all I have.
Questions, comments, clarifications? No. Agenda item four, B, Department of Public Works.
No report, no meeting schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Education and Human Services.
No meeting, no meeting settled.
Thank you. Planning and Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was a meeting held on Monday, November 16th, 2015, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Town Counselor Sean Moriarty, Town Counselor Miguel Estrada, Town Manager Ron Sanangelo, Economic Development Director Rosemary Scrivens, CDGB Grant Coordinator Rose Canoyer, and Citizen Rick Nash. Counselor Vecchia was excused, and Citizen Member Amelia Pellequin was excused. I called the meeting to order at 6:34 PM. Town Counselor Sean Moriarty filled in ex officio for a quorum. I opened the meeting up for discussion. Agenda item one, Discussion of the Master Plan. Town Manager Ron Sanangelo explained how he did not see the plan moving forward in the fashion of an Implementation Steering Committee. The decision was made to take another route and delegated some of the items in the master plan to department heads. Town Manager Ron Sanangelo presented an early draft which defined some of the tasks involved. This is just a preliminary draft of some of the things he is working on. Town Manager Ron Sanangelo has met with Chet Norton of Franklin Realty, the owners of the AO property. They have discussed a variety of issues for economic development. One area they are concentrating on is revitalizing the river. This needs to be defined more, and there is still much more discussion on this. Some of the action steps are grant opportunities, develop funding sources for a walk-in path, bike area, et cetera. Counselor Manna asked if this would be funded by a private investor or the town. Town Manager Sanangelo said that various options need to be looked at with this. Another area that was being looked at was retaining and recruiting new businesses. There was a luncheon held at A&amp;M Manufacturing with other manufacturers in attendance. Another luncheon is in the works to be held at United Lens in December. Economic developer Rosemary Scrivens is looking into federal and state funding for manufacturers. She is also encouraging companies who need more space to contact the Economic Development Office for assistance. Rosemary Scrivens would like to start relationships with these companies before decisions are made. The industrial park was brought up. The town manager is exploring the option of a mining company coming in to help with the rock ledge issues. Midstate Welding has made its home on four parcels of land. A solar company will be making its home there soon. Tiffs are also being looked at to encourage businesses to move into Southbridge. Restoring the reputation of the school system. The town manager is working with the Insurance Superintendent to develop a program for public access television to teach English to the Latino community. This is also being done in collaboration with Counselor Estrada. Working on having materials printed such as flyers to schools and churches to help get the word out. They will also have materials put online. This program is going to be directed toward the older Latino community. Rose Canoyer encourages students to speak English at home as well to help with this process. Optimizing the use of the airport. Town Manager Sanangelo discussed the opening of the restaurant soon, as well as the sewer line and the new building. There is a potential for USDA grants to help in the fight of the opioid crisis and implementing the assistance of our police chief and the Gloucester Police Chief, the Angel Program. Town Manager Sanangelo believes by utilizing public access and doing programs to promote Southbridge will help restore the reputation of the town. He would like to reach out to businesses to come and do these programs as well. Counselor Manna and Counselor Moriarty discussed this was done at one time during council meetings. We would have to reach out to the businesses and invite them. Promoting the holiday decorations, having a community pride week, development of a new blight bylaw was also discussed. Creating a central list of existing resources for the community. Town manager would like to have brochures made up. Counselor Manna asked Rosemary Scrivens if this could be put on the website, not only businesses, but other resources as well. Rosemary mentioned there is also a historical listing of trails, a map. Counselor Manna mentioned this map was made up a few years ago by a volunteer citizen in the town. The establishment of a Latino liaison in the Town Hall was discussed. Town Manager Sanangelo stated this was being worked on and that we have two employees in the Town Hall that are already assistant in this capacity, and he is looking at ways to further implement this. Rosemary Scrivens noted there is CDGB money to do an economic development plan. Town Manager Sanangelo would like to concentrate on improving the downtown facade, enforcing parking regulations, and he would like to talk with the owners of vacant buildings, lots, to clean up their property. Open Space and Recreation Plan. Rosemary Scrivens stated that planning and development is working on a five-year action plan and are looking at grant money. Town Manager Sanangelo mentioned he would like to offer an adopt apart program for area businesses. The continuation of demolishing blighted buildings is still underway, and there may be extra CDGB money for this. Citizen Rick Nash mentioned he wished more people were involved in the town. He told the town manager he was doing a good job and he is a positive influence. Counselor Estrada thanked the town manager, Rosemary Scrivens, and Rose Canoyer for all they are doing. Counselor Manna thanked the town manager and Economic Development for bringing this information to the meeting. The meeting was adjourned at 7:40. Respectfully submitted, Monique Manna, recording clerk for this meeting. And that's it for the meeting minutes, and I have no future meetings planned at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And E, Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Vecchia is not here, but there are no minutes in here to report, and I am not aware of any currently scheduled meeting. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Chairman's Announcements. I have just a couple of short ones. One, the Jacob Edwards Library has invited the general public to participate in a crowdsourcing event to put together a documentary on major fires that have taken place in Southbridge since the 1970s. Program will take place at the library on Thursday, December 3rd, at 6:30 PM. Dick Whitney will make a presentation on the topic, including photographs of these major disasters, and they are hoping that the attendees will be interested in sharing their own memories and memorabilia. If you have any, by all means, either reach out to Mr. Whitney or the folks at the Jacob Edwards Library. Additionally, you'll see that several councilors tonight are sporting one of these red pins here that read "It Starts with Southbridge Pride and Community." And this is the brainchild of our town collector, tax collector, treasurer, treasurer collector, Mindy Ernst Founier, about just kind of doing more to propagate and support Southbridge. And with this, there are several events going on over the course of what we're calling Southbridge Community Pride Week. People are encouraged to wear these pins, which are available here at Town Hall, as well as at Southbridge Savings Bank and other locations. Also to wear red and white throughout the week to support the school system and the town itself throughout the different events, the different restaurants, and so forth. Of the big events, which are all primarily, three of the five are centered around athletics, but this weekend was the Turkey Bowl, which we'll go into in a minute. But this upcoming Wednesday evening, there is a bonfire at McMahon Field on the corner of Dresser Street and Cole Avenue at 6:30 PM, followed by an alumni football game between the Southbridge High School alumni and the Bartlett alumni at 7:00 PM. On November 26th, Thanksgiving morning, is the 94th Annual Turkey Day Game between Southbridge and Bartlett. Southbridge had won seven straight before a loss last year, but based on the way things have gone, including a 42-to-nothing JV win the other day, I'm sure the pioneers are ready for that game at 10:15 on Thanksgiving morning. On Saturday, November 28th, nationally is known as Small Business Saturday, so we encourage everybody to take part in that by shopping and eating locally here in Southbridge at the small businesses. And then on Sunday evening, and I'm sure Counselor Clements or Counselor Manna will elaborate on this later on, but Santa Claus is coming to town with Mrs. Claus for a tree lighting ceremony down on the Town Common, but that'll have a procession coming down Main Streets from Main and Elm before the actual festivities down on the Common, including that lighting. As far as that Turkey Bowl, just as a brief note, you may see that we have a trophy here at the dais with the ball signed by a number of the Webster folks, Webster players, after Southbridge had won the game 47 to 38, with a number of toys going for Toys for Tots, a lot of food going for the Southbridge and Webster food pantries, and money being raised for the American Cancer Society. Pretty well-attended game. Everybody seemed to have fun, no injuries, which is always important, and everybody's already, on both sides, we're already talking about next year, and they're pretty excited about that. But perhaps more importantly at this point is just a couple towns over. In Webster at this moment right now is they're in their board of selectmen meeting. Their acting town administrator Pam Regis Laduke is, as well as their select board chair, Don Bork, are both sporting Southbridge red shirts tonight as a result of that. So I know that our acting manager tonight is thrilled by that as well, despite the split allegiances. And with that, I will move it over to Town Managers' announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have anything further. Agenda Item A is the Commonwealth Community Compact by Council Chair Sean Moriarty.
It's an odd setup, I guess, but we have here, from the Governor's Office, this past week, there was a presentation here by the Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito on behalf of the Governor Charlie Baker. And this is in regards to the Commonwealth Community Compact. We had representatives from Southbridge, as well as Dudley and the Governor's Office that were here. And just to read this briefly, it reads, "Whereas cities and towns and the Commonwealth must work together to create the conditions for a strong and resilient economy, and whereas cities and towns face increasing pressures on municipal and school budgets which impact essential services, and whereas cities and towns are partners with the Commonwealth and the Baker-Polito administration is recommitting itself to that partnership through the Community Compact Cabinet, and whereas the Commonwealth is committed to promoting mutual standards of best practice for both the state and municipalities that will create clear standards, expectations, and accountability for both partners, and whereas the citizens of Massachusetts are right to expect forward-thinking, innovative government from both the Commonwealth and local governments. Commonwealth commitments. As a sign of its commitment to an improved partnership with cities and towns, the Baker-Polito administration intends to be a reliable partner on local aid, pledges to work with our partners in the legislature toward earlier local aid formula funding levels, will work to make available technical assistance opportunities for cities and towns as they work toward best practices, will not propose any new unfunded state mandates, and will look at existing mandates with a goal toward making it easier to manage municipal governments, will give special attention in its review of state regulations to those that affect the ability of municipalities to govern themselves, pledges to work closely with municipal leaders to expand opportunities to add municipal voices to those state boards and commissions that impact local governments, will introduce incentives from municipalities that sign compacts in existing and proposed state grant opportunities, including proposals for technical assistance grants available only to compact communities, will identify ways to expedite state reviews that can often slow down economic development opportunities or hinder other municipal interests. Now therefore, the Town of Southbridge pledges to adopt the following best practice. One, capital planning. The community develops and documents a multi-year capital plan that reflects a community's needs, is reviewed annually, and fits within a financing plan that reflects the community's ability to pay. The Commonwealth will work with the Town of Southbridge as a partner in implementing this best practice, including prioritizing technical assistance when that is needed to execute, to accomplish execution of a new best practice. The Baker-Polito administration seeks to recognize municipalities that are striving to become more innovative and accountable, and introduce incentives through various state grants and programs to reward municipalities who have signed community compacts and committed themselves to continuous improvement. Municipalities that pledge to adopt best practices through compacts will get bonus points on selected state grant programs and will be prioritized for various technical assistance programs. Together we signed this Community Compact in a spirit of partnership and public service, understanding that we serve the citizens of the Commonwealth, and our citizens deserve the best government possible. Signed the 17th day of November in the year 2015, and this is saved by both, signed rather, by both Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito and Town Manager Ron Sanangelo. And this was presented to the town last week, and we thank the Governor's Office for making this pledge and these promises to help out with the town and the other towns throughout the state. If you have anything else. Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Presentations, and I will turn this over to the Vice Chair, Esteban Carrasco Jr.
Yes, as part of, as part of our chairman and myself's initiative of finding the good and praising it in town, it was brought to my attention that earlier this month, we had a local church that celebrated 23 years of history here in town of providing services to our community. So I'm going to ask Pastor William Feliciano to join me as I present them with a certificate. So it reads, a certificate of recognition, excuse me, is presented to Iglesia El Mesias of Southbridge Mass. This certificate is presented to pastors William and Rosa Feliciano on behalf of Iglesia El Mesias in celebration of the church's 23rd anniversary for providing religious services in Spanish to the community of Southbridge. Congratulations to you and the congregation, signed by our Council Chair and also our Town Manager Ron Sanangelo. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Eight is Citizens Forum. If there is anybody here who would like to step forward and speak on anything not on tonight's agenda, now is your time, especially if the camera crew shows the overflowing room. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Discuss, rather than, we'll actually word it the way the motion will work here, and that would be Vote to Appropriate $7,485.36 from sewer-certified retained earnings to account number 600.440.5740.0.573, uninsured sewer backup costs to reimburse a homeowner for costs related to a sewer backup occurring on December 27, 2013.
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments, and the like? Seeing none, a roll call, please.
Counselor Crossco.
Yes.
Counselor Clements.
Yes.
Counselor Estrada.
Yes.
Counselor Manna.
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Yep.
Counselor Vandal.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Ten, Counselors' Forum, and we will start with Counselor Clements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to also thank you for your efforts with this Turkey Bowl. I apologize that I couldn't be there. Sometimes life gets in the way, but I heard it was a great success, so congratulations again, and kudos to all that played and won. It's a wonderful thing. Couple of things. I was at the compact signing this past week with the Lieutenant Governor and others, our state rep and such. It was a great honor to be able to be there and to be part of that, and I believe she said we were 56th and 57th, or something like that, in terms of the compact signing. They're trying to get all, throughout the Commonwealth, and get all the communities to join up and be a part of this. So it was a great honor to be part there with Dudley and their representatives and be able to witness that. So we thank the Lieutenant Governor for coming into our community, and she said she was looking forward to coming back and perhaps touring our community too, so that would be great for, so we could point out some of those things that need attention, perhaps, now that we're a partner together. Also, you know, it's a lot of great things going on in our community. Sometimes people realize it and sometimes they don't. I've been saying for the past six years about saying, commenting about Quinn-Sigman Community College at the bottom of the hill. And I continue to bring you a few updates when I get more information. And I happened to be at the Chamber of Commerce's annual luncheon last week on Wednesday when they had, the presentation was by QCC and the President Gail Carberry and the Vice President of Outreach Dale Allen, and basically they did an update for the community, for the business community at that time, on the ITAC Center. Some of you might remember that the ITAC Center is the Innovation Technology Acceleration Center that was first funded with a $2 million grant from the Deval Patrick Administration a couple of years ago. Well, I guess I'm just here to tell you, it was an amazing presentation that they did, and to let you know that it is currently in process, and it will be a reality within the next year, that we are going to have a state-of-the-art facility here down at the, in the Old American Optical Complex, and that QCC is just going gangbusters to make this happen for our community. It will be an area, we will be a region where people will come from all over to get trained in various manufacturing, electrical, and other types of areas, lots of pathways to future jobs, good-paying, quality jobs. So it's just a wonderful thing for our community, and I just want to keep letting the public know, I'm sure they're going to come into a presentation at some point for us also, we've talked about that, but there's some really great stuff going on here in Southbridge, and all you have to do is open your eyes, take a look around, walk around, talk to people. We have a lot in this community that others want, that want to be a part of this community. And this is going to be a multimillion-dollar facility within a very beautiful facility that already exists there. So keep your eyes and ears open, and you'll hear lots of good information. And moving on to fun stuff, and it is the holiday season, maybe some of you have seen items in town that the volunteers have been putting up the last couple of weeks, and maybe you haven't. Get out there and take a look. Some of you think it's great, and others might think it's a little kitschy, but it is our community, and it has made, it seems to have made quite a few people from all the beeps and the hoots and the hollers and the good wishes. So if it adds a little holiday spirit to this community, so be it. We'll keep going, and we could not have done it without the great volunteers who've been out there the last, as I said, the last couple of weeks. We did have five students from the high school come out also and help on a cold Saturday morning, so we thank them, and Sheila Jalbert and her students who came out, they're part of a new Rotary International program. So thank you, thank you, and we look forward to you coming out in January to take all those decorations back to the warehouse. So we have our tree lighting. It is this Sunday. I think some of you may have seen this flyer that I'm holding up here. It is Sunday. It will start at 5 o'clock. If you want to be part of Santa's procession, you would have to go up at Wells, the old Wells Building on Main Street, and you could walk down with Santa. If you, it's still not too late to make a float. Come on, participate, whether it's something you're pulling, or driving, or, you know, you have lights or not. If you would like to participate, you certainly can. Just show up before 5 o'clock at the old junior high school and come on down the street with Santa. If you just want to meet Santa at the Christmas tree, which was just erected on Sunday morning, it was donated by Marshall and Pam Morse from Morse Lumber here in Southbridge. As they've done for the past six years, they've helped erect that tree. They've donated four of the six. Two of them were donated by local residents. And the tree is up, it will have lights on it, and be ready to, for Santa to come and flip the switch and make it all magical for those who attend. We'll have some carolers, yeah, carolers, carolers, excuse me, from Notre Dame, from Blessed John Paul. And then when, after Santa's done his magic on Main Street, they'll go down to the Town Common, where there will be cookies and cocoa donated by the conference center. There will be Santa photos available for $5 apiece. Those will go till 7:30. Village photo, we'll be doing those again this year. Santa will be there. Whether you take a photo or not, you can come and sit on Santa's lap and tell him what you want for Christmas. And we will also have the wonderful Victorian carolers that come from Connecticut every year. They call and ask if they can participate every year. It's the Act Two Ministries. They'll be singing some wonderful Christmas songs. And we have DJ again that we had last year, Ace of Clubs, who'll be doing some wonderful Christmas music in between. So you want to participate, come on down, show your spirit for the community, and it's supposed to be good weather, according to what we see so far. So we hope to see you at the tree lighting and down at the Common afterwards, to enjoy even more lights this year than we had last year. But you have to come out and see them. That's everything, thanks, sorry.
Thank you. Counselor Vandal.
I wish to, I wish to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Estrada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only for, my voice is late. Only all people happy, so Thanksgiving Day, and good pleasure.
Thank you. Counselor Steves.
Two brief things, actually. One is that a couple of days ago, Maureen and I took a walk up to take a look at the Clements Hill Road Project, and one thing, I don't know if you know, if you can tell me why they do this, Karen, or somebody else can, but it bothered me to see an empty cruiser sitting up there with its lights, with its engine running and lights running at the top of the hill. There was no, no police officer sitting around anywhere in sight. And I don't see, I don't see we should be using our cruisers as, essentially as road signs, because we had a big discussion last year about the budget impact of the fact that we needed to buy cruisers because of so much extra idling time on their engines. Can we, can we find some other way to mark roads without using our cruisers to do it? Because they're not signs, they're cruisers. And the other thing I wanted to point out is to kind of, to dovetail off a Small Business Saturday. Obviously, we should be supporting our small businesses and getting anything that we want to do for Thanksgiving or Christmas and that, those kinds of things. In, in local businesses, Friday is also Buy Nothing Day, so don't give your business, don't give your business to the big corporations. Keep it in our community, support our own people, and reduce the sheer unnecessary consumption and waste. and waste. That's just my comment for the day. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving if you're traveling. Don't do too much shopping. Don't eat too much, but don't eat too little either. I'd also like to give a special thank you to Council Clements and her family for all they've done this year for the Christmas decorations. I wasn't able to help out as much as I would have liked to this year with other commitments that I had. She was purely the backbone of this whole event this year, and, and her family as well. So big kudos to her and, you know, and all her efforts and her families. And I, I look forward to this every year, and seeing the kids' faces light up and, and the tree light up, and even the adults, they have a lot of fun too at this. And also, try to remember our emergency workers over this holiday weekend, they're away from their families, our military servicemen who are away from their families, the, our, even our nurses and the emergency room workers and, you know, the doctors, and as many people that are going to be away from their families this year. But I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carrasco?
Yes, first of all, I just would like to say thank you to the council chair for, again, doing the Turkey Bowl. It was fun. It was still as cold as last year, I think. It was still a cold night, but it was, it was a very fun night. I was very glad that we were able to walk away with the victory, because it would have been very hard to wear green up here. And I'm so glad that Webster's wearing red today. The other only announcement is I, that House of Destiny Ministries will be doing its fourth annual free Thanksgiving community dinner. It will be on Thanksgiving Day from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. And this year, we have partnered up with Elm Street Congregational Church right here on 61 Elm Street will be in their fellowship hall. And if you want a meal, if you would want a meal delivered, we do have some drivers and volunteers that have offered to deliver meals to, to the elderly or to families that don't have transportation and would like to have a hot Thanksgiving Day meal, whether they, they are having their own or they just don't have the ends to make it happen, we want to be able to provide that. So if, you can just call and leave a message at 508-765-6005, 508-765-6005. Leave a message, and someone will contact you to let you know at what time your meal will be delivered. But then again, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and that's all I have.
Before we move on, I just want to, I'm afraid I'll miss people, but I want to thank those who, who volunteered their time to make the Turkey Bowl a nice success and a nice event for the community, for food share, for the Webster Food Pantry, for the American Cancer Society, as well as for the Southern Worcester County Toys for Tots. And those include, aside from those who played, we have Counselor Carrasco and Counselor Steves who played. Counselor Estrada was delayed. He wasn't able to make it on time due to transportation issues down south, much warmer down where you were, though. But also, from the school side, we had school community members Olivo and Peliquin. We had Assistant, Southbridge Middle High School Assistant Principal Anthony Kukase, Chief Woodson, Deputy Chief Dinghy. We had, from the school maintenance department, Chad Fredette and James Prue, and Tiani Fredette from the school department was on the roster, and Joel Tagato, and I'm sure Max Gullickson, who's downstairs in the, the collecting office. And I'm sure I'm still probably going to forget one or two from that list, but in addition to that, Tony O'Coin as our referee, and I know-
He's getting a free meal from Webster.
Jack Jovan and John LaFlesh, who did the game with cable access, Mike Montigny, Jake Maldonado, as well as Rich Tucker and Peter Nicola, who worked the chains down on the field, and so many other people that, that helped make that work. The House of Destiny doing concessions. Counselor Claire and Coach Tony Santilli and Coach Kumunellis for taking care of the punt pass kick, and of course, the sponsor, One Pole Snowblower and Lawn Blower Shop down off of Everett Street, down by the VFW. So I want to thank all those folks for stepping up and doing what they did to make that happen, and a nice positive event in the community gearing forward towards Wednesday night's alumni game and the bonfire, and of course, Thursday morning with the big football game. I just wanted to thank them again and wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving, and take a moment to really consider just how much we tend to overlook and take for granted, because there's so much that we do that with. Lastly, Agenda Item Number 11, Discussion of Next Meeting Date.
Monday, December 14 at 7:00 p.m. here in council chambers.
And lastly, Agenda Item Number 12 would be Adjournments. All those in favor? Thank you. We are adjourned. Have a good night and happy Thanksgiving.[1773.97][1773.97]